Good morning, everyone. Let me call to order this Mayor Commission work session. And I trust that everyone had a good weekend. All right, and the first item is the presentation Inspector General's audit report on the Fire Assessment Fund. Ms. Johnson, do you want to tee this up before we head right in, dive right in?
Yes, good morning, Mayor Commissioners, members of the public and staff. This item relates to a request that the city made back in 2021 for the Inspector General to take a look at the Fire Assessment Fund. That request was made in response to media reports about concern on whether the city was properly utilizing the Fire Assessment Fund, or perhaps maybe that the city was not. And so if there were any areas where we needed to make improvements in the fund, we felt that the Inspector General would be in a good position to do the audit and identify areas where we can make improvements. We did not feel that there was any basis that we were misusing the Fire Assessment Fund, but certainly if that were the case, we wanted to know that. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Carey and his team to make the presentation.
And again, I can't overemphasize this. This is an audit that we requested, the city requested.
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, good morning. Again, I'm John Carey, the Inspector General for Palm Beach County. And again, they created our office in 2010. And I like to say, in summary, we exist to help government be better. Our job, we help promote integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness in government, and we do that through audits like we did here. And we do some of our audits at the request of the cities and the county. Some are self-initiated, so we do audits, we do procurement oversight, contracting oversight, and investigations of any complaints of potential fraud, waste, and abuse. So that's what we're here for. And again, appreciate, yeah, the city asked us to come in and take a look at this to see what we would find and make any recommendations to make the program run better. I have with me today Hillary Bojan, our Director of Audit, is here, and Hank Nagel, who's the lead auditor for this project that worked with the city over the past year or so to complete this audit. So our objectives of the audit was to, again, to look to see if the program, the expenditures were accurate, valid, adequate, supported, properly approved, and made in accordance with established, the fund purpose and applicable requirements. We also looked at if the program was operating as intended with respect to the collection and use of the funds. And then finally, if the controls were adequate for the receipt and dispersment of the Fire Assessment Funds. Now, before we get into the audit, I think it's really important that we talk about terminology. And this is, one term you're going to see in this report is question cost. And it's not, as the mayor pointed out, it's not questionable cost. It's a term of art that Inspector General offices use that goes back to the 1978 Inspector General Act. That's a federal, obviously, it's a federal act that all federal IGs function under, and most of the states and the local inspectors generals have adopted the same terminology that's used at that level. So question costs, again, are alleged violations of provisions of law, regulations, contracts, grant, cooperative agreements, or other agreements of documentation or expenditures of funds. This also can be another category of question costs is a finding that at the time of the audit, such costs are not supported by adequate documentation. And that's some of the findings that we have in this case. It's just about documentation. Or another category of questionable cost are finding that the expenditures of fund for the intended purposes were unnecessary or unreasonable. Now, we add to the definition, just so the readers can make sure what we're talking about. We add to that that as such, as in this case, as in this audit, not all question costs are indicative of fraud or waste or misuse of funds. So overall, what we found, the program, we found that it was generally operated as intended with respect to the collection and use of the funds. We also saw that the city had generally adequate controls in place over the receipt and the dispersment of the Fire Assessment Funds. However, we did find some weaknesses with respect to the interdepartmental transfer of these fire service fees monies, which lacks sufficient supporting documentation. And so to get down into the details of that, I'm going to let Hillary talk about that in case there's any questions that she's better equipped, being worked more intimately on this project between her and Hank to work with that. So I'm going to turn it over to Hillary.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, for finding number one. So in this finding, we found that fiscal year 20 and 21 transfers of Fire Assessment, to the Fire Assessment Fee Fund for IT service costs that totaled approximately $446,000, that they were not sufficiently supported. And specifically, those costs, we could not see how they were allocated through the documentation. So the city allocated IT service costs based on a count of IT-related equipment. And they did that for two fire department divisions, but there were no inventory records to support those counts. As a result, we were not able to determine if the allocation of those costs were proper and in compliance with the Fire Service Assessment Resolutions requirements. Since IT service costs were not sufficiently supported, they were considered question costs. In our second finding, we found that the funds transferred to the Fire Assessment Fee Fund to pay for fire department capital lease costs exceeded the related dispersments made from the debt service fund by almost $250,000. The city did not provide us with documentation to show that the $250,000 that remained in the debt service fund were used for fire department-related costs. As a result, that amount was considered a question cost for a lack of sufficient supporting documentation. In this case, the city has implemented corrective action. So the city reconciled the Fire Assessment Fee monies that were transferred to the debt service fund, and then they had transferred the excess back to the Fire Service Assessment Fee Fund. The next is the third finding in our report, where we found that $134,000 of the Fire Assessment Fee monies that were transferred to the Capital Acquisition Fund in fiscal year 20 had not been allocated to the budget for fire department-related capital expenditures. The city informed us that the funds had not been expended and that they were allocated to the fund balance of the Capital Acquisition Fund. However, they were not allocated to a separate reserve balance. Because the city did not have sufficient documentation demonstrating that the money had been allocated to the fire department-related costs, it was considered a question cost for lack of sufficient documentation. In this case, again, the county has, or rather, the city has implemented corrective action. They created a separate Fire Assessment Fee Reserve Balance within the Capital Acquisition Fund. And they transferred this $134,000 back into that reserve account so that it can be properly tracked for future fire-related expenditures. And this is the last finding in our report. We found that equipment maintenance service costs totaling almost $47,000 were not sufficiently supported. These costs were annual and monthly general administrative and management fees that lacked documentation to show how they were determined. So the city did not provide us with a methodology or a basis for these fees. As a result, we cannot assess if the costs were proper and in compliance with the Fire Assessment Resolutions requirements. Therefore, the total amount was a question cost for a lack of sufficient documentation. And this last item was not a finding, but we felt there was sufficient risk to warrant it being in the report. We had traced four transfers authorized by city resolutions in late fiscal year 2018 and early 2019 to the corresponding budgeted amounts in the fire department projects within the Capital Acquisition Fund. We found that two of the transfers totaling $129,000 had not been encumbered or expended for four to five years following appropriation. Additionally, we found two transfers totaling $329,000 had been reallocated to a project that may not meet the Fire Assessment Resolutions requirements. Therefore, in both cases, there is an increased risk that the Fire Assessment Fee Funds may not be expended in compliance with the Fire Assessment Resolutions requirements. So overall, our audit found that the Fire Service Assessment Fee Program was generally working as intended with respect to the collection and use of the funds, and there were generally adequate controls in place over the process. Our findings, however, highlighted weaknesses over the interdepartmental transfer of funds because those transfers lack sufficient documentation to show that they were directly related to fire department-related costs. So if there's any questions, me and Hank are happy to answer to the best we can.
Mayor, can I just put it sort of in perspective here for members of the public who at this point don't have
Yes, absolutely.
don't have copies of the audit report? And I know it was provided to the commissioners as part of the email, and you may not have had an opportunity to delve into the details. But I just want to footnote that the Inspector General's audit, you know, covered the period from October 1 of 2017 through September 30 of 2021. And in that timeframe, we collected approximately $22 million in Fire Assessment Fee Funds. And the report, what it boils down to is that $877,000 of question costs that related, you know, primarily, again, to documentation between funds, methodology, and what have you. And those are certainly administrative, operational areas that we are going to look at having all of that documentation, the methodology spelled out at the latest by the end of this calendar year. Two items have already been corrected in terms of processes and procedures, and we will work to have the remaining items completed and in place by the end of 2023.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, I don't know if it would be you or someone in Finance who could maybe describe in more detail the corrective action that has been taken to date? And that's one question. And secondly, has that been discussed with the Office of the Inspector General? Have they accepted the corrective action that has been taken?
Yes, it has been provided in writing to the Inspector General's office, and I'll let them speak to that further. We have Karen Malcolm from Finance, who can, you know, speak to the details, you know, of our responses. Our CFO is actually out of the office today and regret that she couldn't be here. She is out of the state at this point.
Before Karen comes up, we did accept the corrective action for the two items that Karen's about to explain. They are considered, our recommendations for those items are considered implemented.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, Karen Malcolm, Finance Department. So what we have done is, in the fiscal '24 budget, we have included a transfer of funds to replenish the amount for the amount that was owed back to the Fire Assessment Fee Fund for the excess. And we've also paid for the fire-related debt service. We have paid that from excess funds that were included in the debt service fund. So no monies were transferred into the Fire Assessment Fee Fund for '24 debt service. In addition, the Finance Department is in the process of documenting all of the processes and methodologies recommended by the IG's office to determine how Fire Assessment Fee charges are allocated for admin services for fleet charges or IT charges.
Ms. Ward?
I'm a little bit confused. So these items that you're talking, is this on?
No.
No, I don't think it is.
Swabskis. Okay, is this on? Mine just not, okay.
There we go.
So are you talking about the two non-finding items that weren't described in detail? Is that what you're talking about that was fixed? Which item are we talking about that they listed that you fit, that was fixed?
There were two findings that have already been implemented. Repayment of Fire Assessment Fees that was in excess of the amount that was required for debt service payments. Those amounts have been replenished to the Fire Assessment Fee Fund. That's one item. And then the second item is where there was a concern of excess amounts included for fund balance. That amount was already included in the budget for fiscal '24 to be allocated for only Fire Assessment Fee. So no monies were transferred from the Fire Assessment Fee Fund to the debt service fund for fiscal '24 debt service payments. And then the third is the capital reserve that was $134,000. The finding was that it was not specifically allocated in the capital fund. Those amounts have been designated with a project number to be specifically tracked for Fire Assessment Fee costs. And I think the fourth one is now, there was no documentation supporting Fire Assessment Fee Funds for administrative costs. Those amounts or the processes are in the process of being documented to respond to the IG's office.
Jose Luis Rodriguez, Assistant City Administrator. One further clarification, in addition to what Ms. Malcolm said, we also added tracking codes and headlines to the budget this year, to certain parts of the budget, to better track when you're transferring the Fire Assessment Feeds from, for example, from Fund A to Fund B, that it still has a Fire Assessment Fee tag when it transfers into the new pot of money, so that within the new pot of money that it was transferred in, you can always segregate that out and make sure that when you're transferring it between inner line items in the budget, that it's tracked. And that was one of the findings that was found that was already implemented as part of the FY '24 budget that's already in place. So the only thing that's left is now just updating our procedures or our policies as needed before the end of the year to document all this in writing, in a written policy or procedure.
Any other questions? One observation, I guess, an additional point of emphasis, and maybe it's on slide one. By the way, why aren't we able to see, the audience is not able to see us? The discussion going on? They can only see the presentation at a time? Now they can see us, but I need to see the slide, so we can't do both. Okay, all right, if you could go back to the slide then, I'm sorry. That's finding, what was, when Mr. Carey first got up, I think he had an introductory slide.
Here's the opening slide.
It was the opening slide, well, not that one. Maybe the next one?
This is the first slide.
Okay, second slide maybe. He had some language in there which basically, and maybe where we talk about questioned costs. There we go. That very last paragraph, I think, is really the crux of the matter here. And that basically says, in your words, "In this case, not all questioned costs are indicative of potential fraud or waste." And I want the public to understand that. Two things, one is, we requested this audit. Obviously, if we were engaged in nefarious activities, I don't think we would ask for an audit. Secondly, even the results of the audit show that, and I don't want to overstate this, but there does not seem to be any indication of potential fraud or waste based upon the audit. And I think if you look at the total dollar amount, and this is where Ms. Johnson, I think, was going, of the question cost, some $800,000, I think, to the total amount in the actual Fire Assessment Fund. And I don't, I'm not good at math, I'm just a lawyer. But it's a relatively small percentage of the total amount. Has anybody calculated those numbers?
I think that percentage is probably .04%, somewhere in that ballpark.
Okay, okay, so we requested the audit, no indication of potential fraud or waste, and the dollars that were questioned, the total amount of dollars that are questioned is less than 1%, I think it's safe to say.
It is definitely less than 1%.
Okay. President Warren?
I think it's always prudent to seek counsel. And in this particular circumstance, I mean, and best-run organizations is always an opportunity for improvement.
Absolutely.
And so for us to initiate this review for that purpose, to look at practices and see where there was an opportunity for improvement, and then to proactively implement those protocols, I think shows really good judgment on our part. And I appreciate the clarification when we look at the totality of the length of time of the assessment, the amount of the assessment, and that this really is, there's nothing that is identified a misuse, simply an opportunity for improvement of tracking for clarity purposes. So all in all, I am okay with these findings and very happy with the steps that have been taken for improvement.
I'd like to just add, you know, a couple of additional footnotes. I think Commissioner Warren, you know, your point is very well taken. There is always opportunities for improvement. And certainly, with administration now providing more focus on fiscal sustainability and operational excellence, you know, we are looking to really get to that threshold where all of our policies and procedures, you know, are codified in writing. When you look at the item that relates to the vehicles in terms of that methodology, if I were to meet with the former staff, I am confident that they would be able to articulate off the top of their head the methodology that was utilized to determine how costs are determined for vehicles as it relates to, not only Fire Assessment Fund, but all of the different funds. However, when it comes to an audit standpoint, we need to have that methodology codified, you know, in writing so that if it ever were to come into question, you know, we can say procedurally, here is that methodology. And I think the same is true on the IT side. You know, how do we determine that vehicle cost for each of the different funds and operations? While we make certain that the vehicles out of the Fire Assessment Fund are in fact given to the fire department, those vehicles are utilized only by the fire department. But in terms of that methodology, how do we determine on a vehicle-by-vehicle basis for the various operations and then be able to spell that out, you know, in policy and procedures? And, you know, the administrative side of the operation is a backend operations that typically you don't see, but it's critically important that you have those policies and procedures outlined. Somewhat related to this, in prior work sessions with the board, we went through a number of just policies and procedures that we had updated or new policies and procedures that we put in place. And it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing effort that you have to be intentional about making certain your organization has all of that in place. And so we certainly appreciate the recommendations from the Inspector General because we want to always be audit-compliant, whether it's the Inspector General's audit or our own internal audit. We want to run a audit-compliance organization, and I think we've made just considerable headway along that line, and it's something we'll continue to work on.
President Warren?
And I think that these actions, I believe that the public has a right to have questions about the way funds are utilized. And these actions, I'm hopeful, will continue to build their trust in our organization and in our transparency. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions, comments? We're hearing none.
Sorry, I just had one, just because I'm trying to piece this together, and it's a lot of financial, and I agree on the math point with the lawyer thing. So you had eight recommendations in this, and then it says in here that you've, the city has implemented corrective action for two of the recommendations, but it sounds like we've done more than that. So is this stated?
No, that is accurate. We have implemented two. And the other six, we plan to have those implemented by the end of calendar year 2023.
Okay.
In the calendar year 2023, meaning before the end of next month?
You know, that would be the end of next month, you know.
I just, for clarification, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same year.
Yes. Yes. By the end of next month, December of 2023, our plan is to have the other six recommendations completely implemented.
Now, will those also go to the Inspector General's office so they could see that we have taken that corrective action?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And just as a matter of protocol, Administrator Johnson, if you could just let me and the commission know when that has, that action has been taken and it's been communicated to the Inspector General, so we know that that box has been checked, we could check that box?
Will do.
Okay. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you so much to everyone that was involved in this. I agree that it's very helpful for the public to know that we have this second level of oversight. I think since we raised our fire assessment fee, especially, you know, there have been questions about, I think, going forward, we needed additional services that we were going to be using that assessment for, and just trying to determine, you know, there's, if the things that we actually said we were using it for are, and so I don't question at all, I think we obviously have been doing our best, and I'm glad to see the findings, but I guess my question is, for the city going forward, in terms of what the assessment is used for, I know there's a bit of a gray area in terms of what are, you know, what we were already using in the general fund going for the fire department, and then the additional assessment, sometimes it all gets mixed, but I guess who is determining how we're using the assessment going forward and what the needs are? Is it the fire department telling us that we need another truck, or we need something, or is it finance telling us how the money is being used in the general fund? I guess if you could talk a little bit just about going forward, how we're determining how the assessment is going to be used.
Thank you, Commissioner Fox. We do that on an annual basis as part of the budget process. The budget process is a very iterative, dynamic process wherein it actually starts with the departments putting together their requested budgets, and that's done on an annual basis. In this particular instance, the fire chief determines what items need to be requested or will, or that is requested from the fire assessment fund. Now, with the exception of debt service, which that's an automatic amount that we have to pay, she determines what needs the department has from the fire assessment fund. So she meets with her team as part of putting the requested budget together. Finance's role in that is to track how much revenue we project to get from the fire assessment fund, and in looking at the requests from Chief Matty and looking at the projected revenue from finance, those two items have to balance. So, for example, if the fire chief request is higher than what we project to get in revenue, then as the city administrator, based on priority needs, then I determine what will come off that list, because the expenditures always have to balance with the revenues. The next step in our process is through the work sessions that we have on an annual basis with the proposed budget. That is presented to the board. It's presented by categories of expenses, because we have to cover the salaries that are dialed into the fire assessment fund. So we have that line item, debt service, and then you have the capital, the different types of equipment that is being proposed or repairs that are being proposed. And then it just goes through then the next steps in the budget process in terms of the proposed, projected, the tentative, and then final, the adopted budget. But I want to put into context for the board here, I think, the genesis of what raised the questions about whether administration was properly utilizing the fire assessment fund. So if I go back, and we're going back into time, I just want to summarize it. We had a situation whereby when the board, back then, approved the increase in the fire assessment fund, there was a representation made that we were going to use X amount of those dollars for additional fire personnel. For whatever reasons, it did not get put into the budget that year. It was discovered in midstream, we were in the midst of a transition between administrators, and so that did not get put into the budget. That was corrected. Those nine firefighters that was part of that proposal for the increase in the fees was corrected, and those firefighters were bought onboard out of the fire assessment fund, and I believe there was a higher-level position that was also added to that fund. So in terms of the process, it's led by the fire chief and her team in terms of their requested budget, and then it just goes through the rest of the budget review process, ultimately approved by the board.
Any follow-up? Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me? Okay, thanks. Thank you, Administrator Johnson. I'm appreciative that we talked about staff, that we trust that they were following the right processes, but that it's important to have the proper documentation for this. I know that we have a robust internal audit department, but that we also have a great resource in our county by the Inspector General's office. I'm curious, what prompted us to reach out to this group? And I apologize if I missed it in the, in the beginning of the presentation.
It was prompted by the accusations that the fire assessment fund revenue was being misused, and so that hit the media, and we wanted to have the Inspector General, who focuses on fraud, abuse, and give me the third one, waste. You know, so if there was any inkling, you know, along that line, the Inspector General's office is the appropriate agency to determine that, and we wanted to be the first to know if that were or were not the case.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson is being very politically correct. I'm not going to be. Those accusations came up during a period of union negotiations, and the then representatives, to be distinguished from the current representatives of the union, started spreading the rumors that our administration, this administration was somehow misusing or misapplying the funds in the fire assessment fee. I don't know if that was a negotiation strategy or whatever to put this administration in a bad light, maybe they thought that would weaken us or whatever. In any event, the rumors were spread, media picked up on it, and as our response, we decided to enlist the services of the Office of the Inspector General. We denied it, but rather than expecting people to take our word, we solicited the assistance of the Inspector General, whose job it is to look into the matters of this hill. So that's kind of how we ended up here, and I'm very pleased with this report. And as Ms. Johnson says, and I think President Warren also commented, we can always be better as an organization, and we strive as this administration to be better. And certainly, there were some areas of weakness that were identified in this report, which we will act upon. So at the end of the day, the public should have even higher confidence in how these funds are being utilized, and the procedures and policies that will now be documented that are in place to protect the integrity of this fund. Commissioner Lambert?
Just a follow-up. Just want to say thank you so much, because I think that trust and integrity are at the forefront of the values that the public expects for us to have. So thank you, Mayor and Administrator, for following up on this, and I look forward to seeing the results and ensuring that we're following these recommendations. Thank you.
President Warren.
Madam Administrator, just for my edification, when did you become the Administrator?
Permanently. I was appointed January nineteen, two thousand twenty, but, you know, I don't have that date seared in my head, but.
A date that will live in infamy.
Twelve P.M. But I just think that this is a great practice, when you're changing administrations in a role as significant as the city administrator, and to look at this type of fund and how funds have been used, it was a very wise decision, I believe, to have an independent agency such as the Inspector General come in to look at the, look at the processes and to provide some best practices.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, if I could, in closing, you know, I would like to just put on the record that, you know, I had the fortunate experience of working with and interacting with Mr. Carey in his office during my tenure at the county. And so I was very confident that if there were anything to be found, that the Inspector General's office, which is just highly professionally operated, that they would find it, you know, they would identify it, and I wanted to have that level of comfort, that, you know, we would bring in the best of the team to take a look at this, and that whatever was found, good, bad, you know, or ugly, that they would uncover it, and that would be noted in the audit findings. So I want to thank you, Mr. Carey, you and your team, because I know you all spent an inordinate amount of time, you know, over that year and a half, you know, going through everything with the fine tooth comb, and we're going to be a better organization forward as it relates to being audit compliance.
And let me also thank you publicly, Mr. Carey, you and your team. We've all heard that saying about, you know, somebody knocks on your door and says, "I'm from the government and I'm here to help." Well, in this case, we knocked on your door, and you are from the government, and you did help. So we truly, truly appreciate it, and as Ms. Johnson says, we will be a better organization, a stronger organization as a result of your assistance. So thank you so much. Okay, anything else on this item? If not, we will move to item two. Thank you all again. Parks and Recreation Coleman Park Gymnasium naming request. Ms. Johnson, who is, I know Ms. Rockwell and Ms. Gardner are listed.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Leah Rockwell, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Today, we're here to talk about the Coleman Park Gymnasium, which we have been working on diligently over the past several months to get constructed and ready for opening. We're here to talk about a naming request. So to go just basically over the process for naming, there are some guidelines, but in yellow, I've highlighted the ones that are in particular about this, this one in particular. An individual or group who has made an exceptional contribution to the city of West Palm Beach with preference being given for contributions to Parks and Recreation Services with exceptional contributions, including, one of course is like giving lots of money, but the other is providing direct and significant volunteer services benefiting the public as a local or community leader. And then there's just a whole bunch of procedures that goes along with it. So we talk about the reason for the process, the proposed name, evidence of the community support of the proposed name, either a petition or a letter from a neighborhood association. Petitions are then submitted, it has to require all of the addresses and information, but this was not a petition, this was a request from the neighborhood. And then the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee is required to review it before it comes before you. So they review the nomination in accordance with Section Three of the Guidelines. They research, review, and study the supporting documents, which was the letter from the neighborhood association, and then they forward a recommendation to you, the city commissioner and the mayor. So on October seventeenth, in front of you, and you would have received a letter from the Coleman Park Neighborhood Association, sent to Mayor James, requesting the city consider honoring the memory of Paul G. Blackshear. Paul was a thirty-nine-year city of West Palm Beach Parks and Recreation employee. They talk about that he was a coach, mentor, dedicated, a visionary, generous spirit, leader, teacher, historian, and ambassador. Those are some of the words that they used in their letter. On October seventeenth, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee reviewed the request. The neighborhood association attended the meeting, and they were, they spoke on behalf of this request. PrAC made a motion requesting staff begin, brings, before the city commission, the request to name Coleman Park's new gymnasium, the Paul G. Blackshear Gymnasium. PrAC unanimously voted in favor of this request. So Coleman Park sits west of Tammeran Avenue, on East Parkway, between Twenty-first and Nineteenth Street, and then to the east of the railroad tracks. And this is what the gymnasium rendering is. It is almost through with construction, but because it was very unsightly, the construction site right now, I didn't want to provide you with a picture of that. But I have here today Kathy Gardner, who is the Coleman Park Neighborhood Association President, who provided this request on behalf of the neighborhood, who will speak a few words about Mr. Blackshear and the community's request. Ms. Gardner.
Thank you, everybody. Good morning, and thank you all for being here and giving us this chance and listening to us, Honorable Mayor, everybody. And I believe his family's on their way in, because they, all right, Paul Blackshear, thank you for the memory and celebrating the memory of Paul. I knew him, well, not as long as the other people knew him, but the time that I did know Paul, he was just a gentle giant. That's how I would describe him. So helpful in the community. He helped us, especially with the seniors with smart hats, and he was helping us with, okay, food, with bingo, and just things that were dear to us. And I just know him just in a very positive light. I'm glad that I had the opportunity to meet him, and he was very instrumental in helping all the young people. He had a heart for all the young people, and I'm afraid I don't do enough justice, so I'm very concerned. I would like his family to come in and speak on his behalf, because for what I've known, I can't do any justice of, it's all positive, and I love him.
Well, if the family's here, fine. If not, we got to.
They're here, they're here. I don't know why they're not inside here.
Well, maybe one or two representatives, but let's, let's.
All right, and then the.
Is anyone from the family here?
Yeah.
Maybe one or two representatives can speak.
The workshop is open to the public. They can come on in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner.
Amen. Good morning to the mayor and commissioners, and thank God to be here this morning, and thank for letting me sit in your other meeting. However, on behalf of Paul, I'm here to just.
Could you state your name for the record, sir, please?
Kenneth Allen, Reverend Kenneth Allen. I'm here, the entrepreneur of Hamburger Haven. I'm here, a member of New Western Missionary Baptist Church, and on behalf of the same churches where Paul found himself that he was a member of also. However, in my knowledge of Paul, or knowing Paul, I've known him all his life. Amen, I need to say it that way. But Paul was a dedicated person to his position. Amen, I say it that way because he was dedicated to the park system. Amen, when we talk about dedication and dedicated, Paul was dedicated. Amen, and what he's blessed me for in his dedication was that I had a daughter who was able to participate in the after-school programs that he had at Coleman Park, and then I had a granddaughter that also was able to participate in the things that he did at Coleman Park. And I can't think of a person on earth that would be better suited for to have their name put on their gymnasium than Paul. Paul was an athlete, so to speak, but uniquely about Paul is this, and I'll go to my seat. Paul came into my restaurant one day, and he said, "Kennedy boy," that's what he called me, "Kennedy boy, I need you to do something for me." And I'm thinking he was coming in to order something to eat, so he called me over to the counter, and he said, "Kennedy boy, I want you to promise me that you would do my eulogy for my funeral." And I'm saying, "I'm not even." me that you would do my eulogy for my funeral. And I'm saying, I'm not even thinking about him dying. Amen. Let's forget anything else. But he thought that much of me that he would come in and ask me, and I'm trying to first realize what kind of sickness is it? You know what I'm saying? But he, in making sure that he put things in order, and that's why I, I credit him so much for what he's done at Coleman Park and the organization as far as establishing and coordinating things at that park. He even coordinated his funeral. Amen. And I just did my part to, 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 because he asked and because he thought that much of me, and I'm thankful to be here because I thank that much of him. Amen. So this morning, I hope that we can get his name established on that gymnasium because he deserves it. Amen. And we deserve it. Amen.
Amen. All right. Can we have a representative of the family speak on his behalf? All right.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Fay Blackshear. On behalf of my brother, Paul Blackshear, I'm here speaking. I'm very honored. It's an honor to be invited here today. My brother, Paul Blackshear, life well lived. To the city of West Palm Beach Recreation and Parks, thank you for having me, my family, and the community here. I must say, he loved his job. So much of being there for 39 years with the city. So it was a privilege for him to work at different parks and recreation. The love he had, though, was for Coleman Park. Out of all the parks he went to, it was Coleman Park was his favorite. Not only did he live to enjoy his job, but he also enjoyed the sports. He was a coach for the kids, the computer, the aftercare program, and to say with the seniors, he loved the seniors. I think he was the first ones that had something to do with seniors, with their recreations, and they would go on the bus to movies and, you know, and so forth and so on like that. So he, he really put a lot of work in with the seniors. And with the basketball team because he was coaching the kids of basketball. And it was so funny because he gave all of the children, even if they lost, he gave all of them a trophy. So they were so excited. Oh, I got a trophy. T, t, t. I said, oh, good. So he was very, very amused with that. And I have so many parents that's coming to me saying how much they really missed him. You know, we all missed him. Now the angels are looking over him. I had, I, I, there's so much I wanted to say, but. Okay. You're right, because I can go on and on and on about my brother.
It's all right.
And he was, he, he loved working for the city. And I would say, life well done, work well done, good and faithful servant. So his memory live on. But before I would leave, I would like to say thank you to each and every one of you for taking the time out of your busy schedule. Special thanks going out to Lynn Highsmith, Nellie Cooper, Kathy Gardner, Debbie Rine, Erin Page, Reverend Kenneth Allen. He's looking down on all of us, smiling and saying thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, any questions?
Okay, is that in the presentation? Any questions?
Yes, it does.
Commissioner Ward?
It's not necessarily a question, more of a request, just because I'm, I'm noticing the, the historical impact that he had and was part of that, you know, link in Coleman Park Culture and History Committee. And I know when I go into especially Pleasant City and Coleman Park in my district, and we've talked about this, we had the historian come in, the Historic Northwest, preserving the, the culture and the history, a lot of the times is about making sure that we remember some of these people in our communities who, who made a difference. And so while I would, I would be happy to support this, I would also love it if we could have some sort of plaque that explains, so for, for kids to come in and understand what, what's the meaning of why this is named this way, but to actually have, hey, this was his contribution to the community, and maybe reference some of these things. That way, if someone is interested in the history, they can start digging in. That way, we can start bridging and understanding more how, you know, what that history is. It's a good starting point.
Excellent suggestion. Any other ques- all right. So what action are you looking for today?
So we're not really looking for a specific action. We just wanted to bring this before you because it will be coming before you as a resolution at a city commission meeting, and we want to make sure that we're moving in the right direction and that you would like us to move forward with, with this process.
I would say, Mayor, we're looking for the support of the board.
Yeah.
You know, for the request, so that we can move it forward on an agenda.
I believe we do have that, Commissioner Fox and then Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I'm very supportive of this. I've been very supportive for several months since I first heard about it. I, I'm happy that we are able to have the opportunity to honor some, some of these local heroes, and it's great to see so many of the family members. I think one of my requests would be, hey, maybe Kennyboy wants to come to the ribbon cutting with some hamburger haven for us.
I thought you were going to ask him to preach a funeral. I, I, I'm sorry.
Anyway, but it's great to see so many of you here, and I'm very supportive of this.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I just wanted to express my support as well and, and to thank Ms. Kathy Gardner and the Neighborhood Association for making this recommendation. And I think that, I mean, this letter is one of the most profound history pieces that I have read in it, and I'm thankful to Commissioner Ward for her suggestion. I think that it's important that we tell these stories and that we recognize that these individuals play such an important part, not only in the lives of the children that they're impacting, but also the parents and, and the long-lasting effects that they have. So thank you so much to the family for carrying on his, his story.
Okay, very good. So I think, did you have anything to say, Madam President? I think we do have full, you do have full support, so let's get it scheduled for our commission agenda. Any idea which, when you're going to bring it before us?
I'm, I'm hoping to bring it before you the beginning of December, if not the last meeting in November. I'm trying to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. Just let the family know so if they wanted to be there to witness that historic event.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
All right. Okay, thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Okay, we're, at this point, we're adjourned. Mayor, unless you have some other matters, we need to adjourn to.
The commissioners, unless you have something dying for the, the good of the body, we wanted to turn to this training. We need to get Paul up by 10 o'clock because I know it's going to be about a 90-minute training session. So does anybody have anything pressing before we adjourn the work session and move into the training?
Yes, and we do have to clear the gallery. The training is not part of the work session and will not be televised.
Thank you all very much. Absolutely. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. All right, we'll take like a three-minute, two-minute recess.